Thirty-one past the hour, and so it's waiting. How this meeting will order, we have the electronic and video and everything up on one. Well, welcome everyone to tonight's Roosevelt City meeting. We appreciate you being here with us tonight. And to get started, we'll go ahead and mention that Councilman Clower is excused tonight. He is coming, but we do have the rest of the council, including Councilman Allen, who is joining us virtually tonight. So, Councilman Allen, can you hear us? Can we hear him?
I can hear you.
Perfect. All right. To begin, we've asked Councilman White to give us a prayer, and then we'll go ahead and use our lead.
Father in heaven, we're grateful to meet tonight to discuss the prayers of Roosevelt City. We're grateful for this beautiful land and what you live and for all the vows blessed us with. Great that thou will guide us in our discussions, in our efforts to make this continually be a great place to live for those who serve to protect and keep us safe. God bless all of our first responders and their families. We are grateful for the worship that we receive and that we may continue to be blessed throughout this year and have our needs taken care of, as we've been here Jesus Christ. Amen.
I will be the nation's steward, the United States of America, the republic of which is a nation under indivisible,天地一統.
Okay, thank you, Lord. First item tonight is, are the minutes from the last meeting, are there any amendments or corrections that need to be made?
I had two, which already gave to sunshine. One was a typo, and one was just finishing the sentence. Other than that, I didn't see any, so I had to move. We approve with those adjustments. I'll second that.
Motion to approve, and saying my Councilman Bear, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. We do have our public comment period at this time. Anyone that is joining us tonight is welcome to come and address the council. You can take up to three minutes. We ask that you state your name and come to the podium. Any tonight that would like to take that opportunity?
I will. Hi, Nancy Booner. Just wanted to comment on the street work down there updates looking good. And we are kind of concerned about how fast people will be tempted to drive now that it's quieter. So I kind of don't know if it's possible to get some street speed limit signs put up somewhere between Southland Maverick and thousand ten eighty south or somewhere. That's a pretty long stretch. Just say even if all kids take people walking dogs and so it's some kind of a busy area. And people do go a lot faster than twenty-five or whatever thirty is kind of the standard of city residential speed.
I think there are some signs, I think it's thirty-five there.
I'm not sure where they're located.
They're hard to see, but they're.
Probably our trees and the block.
Yeah, maybe a little further as well, who knows? See you cheap to do this thing.
It's very fun, and a lot of the signs were ruined during construction, so then we go back.
And it's just pretty, pretty good to be here this year. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Nancy. Sure appreciate you. We don't have any committee appointments tonight over recognitions that I'm aware of. All right, so next item, Troy Gads, who is tonight, has an assistant request to address council. And Troy, I'm going to turn the time over to you, Drew. I'm sure you'll be involved in this.
Can I go to the board?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
Speak loudly.
All right. So, I've been, about three weeks ago, I was hired to do a survey for Lindsey and Charlie with the concern of the property that is behind their house. Behind their house, north of their fences between it and the sidewalk. A little history on this, this is Parkview subdivision when it was originally subdivided on this line right here, come across back in, I think, oh-six. You guys vacated ten feet of that street. Since then, Trent Bell, Bellevue Estates, has come in and developed this stuff. So ultimately, what you have left is sixty-two feet on Lagooding, fifty-six feet on Bellevue. Just, and like I said, they requested a survey. Part of the reason, not for the road, but when you vacated that, it affected these two lots, which means you have amended subdivision, which is why they're kinder to me. So, in doing that, then, a lot of the line adjustment approved through the city from four and three, which, I don't, you can't really zoom in, but essentially it goes up to Bellevue's north line over two feet seventeen hundredths, then it's going to drop back down three feet seventy-three hundredths, and then come across. So, essentially, it's just some odd spaces there. Bellevue's north line to their sidewalk is five feet, same thing here. So you're talking almost nine feet here, and just over seven and a half, just shy of seven and a half, seven twenty-seven. Just wanted to discuss to see if you guys would be willing to vacate more property.
Any questions from the council? I, the only thing that I do know that we've already vacated several sections, isn't that correct, Drew?
Yeah, in, in the past.
I'm trying to think, is this, it's on Lagooding Street, and it's not that we vacated, but we did. There's an issue because the property line, and where, so, one of the issues that we had before was people had built their fences, brought it to the sidewalk, but technically, the property line that the city owned was in there probably several feet. And then if people didn't have fences up, the question was, who's supposed to take care of the property? Because technically, the landlord doesn't own it, Roosevelt City does, and then who maintains it? Who takes care of it? And I know that was the discussion that we had. Yeah, five, eight, no, six, seven, eight years, and it's been a while.
So this is, this is vacant lot, like I said, Bellevue Lot Three, this is where Lindsey Huber lives. Lindsey, she used to be Park, but Huber now, Charlie Arnold, and this is.
Mayor White.
But his is not part of the subdivision, so any changes you make to.
I swear we, this already came, this is that.
So you vacated ten feet? Um, back in, oh, two thousand six, but that still causes you sixty to sixty-two foot road here? Fifty-six foot road here, I'd say it's.
So Troy, I swear, if I'm not really thinking. We, we addressed this at one point, because I remember seeing this exact map and these fence lines that are already in place that we were talking about before, and they may have vacated that ten feet, but I'm confident that we may be able to go back and either find that or it's worth discussing, because between the fence line and the sidewalks, what you're talking about, correct?
Right, some distance. I don't, I don't think they want, just, as a survey, I like straight lines.
Yeah, and I'm ninety-nine percent sure this already came, and we did approve something, so.
So it's not, I, or if you go back to the, the map.
I know I was on the council with, I was with you when I was on, either when I first elected or as mayor, or when I was on the council report, so it could be anywhere from thirteen to fifteen, or eighteen.
This map looks like it's close. I don't, it's not that close anymore, like I said. From property line to the back sidewalk on the south side is over eight feet, eight and a half, nine feet, almost.
And the discussion, just so the council knows what, I remember the discussion then, it was just that there's a gap between what the property owner owns and what, what the sidewalk begins, and who is responsible for that, and it was, it was decided that it was better if we just forfeited that area to the property owner and allowed Ben to take care of that property, and then, because the Brooklyn itself is actually straight, the sidewalk's actually straight.
Yes.
It's just the gap between the sidewalk and fence lines and all that that is in question exactly.
Yeah.
So one, one question I have is if we do vacate that back from the original issue, would the contingency, the thing of their fence, could we do something like that?
That's a good question, because they, ultimately, the desire at the time, and the council can decide what they want, unless we find an actual motion that dictates what should happen then. But if the council decides to do something other than this, that's fine, but what they anticipation was is that that would become the responsibility of the landlord for weeds and for all of that other stuff. And so they could do their fence, but ultimately, they're responsible for weed control and to maintain it, to care.
My concern is just the weed making, if they know that they're responsible at that point.
So we'll just look at, I swear this came, I think it's what we got.
Well, I, I can't tell you that Charlie's, not deed, well, his deed too, his deed makes reference of it. Lindsey's does not, so Lindsey still says the lot and then some vacation is, I don't know, bless their hearts, but title companies like to grab survey descriptions and make their own, but I don't know if they grabbed that and, from over here and figured out that, but.
So you're saying Charlie's deed reflects him owning that piece then?
Yes, but I don't know.
Because it was supposed to be.
But I can't see a vacation in it, and if there's been a title search done on it by basin, well.
Was his a quick claim, or how did they do that?
Um, his quick claim did, but for himself and his wife, like I said, it's not.
Sounds like we need a little more research on it, on Drew's end, to see what you did previously, if you, if you actually dealt with this.
We'll dig back and see what we find. I think we kind of got a timeframe, and we can search.
This could be time. I can even help with that. I'm just curious if the council think the nation, because it is just a discussion, not that we have to make a decision right now, but what is the council's feeling on direction for? Drew, is it something that we, that we would entertain vacating and just do a quick claim? And have an ownership of that?
I'm good at that, because if it's the city's property right now, we're responsible for the weeds, aren't we?
Certainly, I understand it.
I think it's just easier to give them that little piece of property and let them do it.
And, and so. I guess the.
What is your opinion, Drew?
Let's go ahead. I'm working for these two, but if you're going to clean it up, clean it up on both sides of the road. So you clean up in something on this side, and I think those are, those aren't part of the subdivision, so it wouldn't cause anything. There meets and bounds. This is meets and bounds, but when you vacate property next to subdivisions, causes problems. Should have managed something.
I mean that, you, I mean that, Drew, twenty bucks lunch that we talked about this for, before you were involved. We can venture, we'll find that, but I agree with Troy. If we're going to do it on the south, we're going to do it on the north as well, and just clean all the lines up.
And I, and I agree with Councilman Bear. My inclination is the same way, is that we would just go ahead and forfeit and let them deal with that part of it. But it's, like you said, it's not an action item, but I think we need a little more information. Maybe it was already taken care of, but some of it, but obviously, the other side needs to be taken care of as well, so.
Lunch for all of you, or just you?
And I'll buy you lunch, so.
So, so I can tell them what the, um, your plan is, but what kind of timeframe are we talking about? I mean, Drew's got to do some homework, but that's, like, what's, do I have to come back to a planning and zoning meeting? Do I have to come back to a city council meeting?
Did this come through planning and zoning?
Not yet, but we just referred in the city council where it was property transaction.
It would be a lot line adjustment ultimately. My guess is, I, I think if our inclination is to do that, then I don't know that it needs, there's need to come back before this council to, for Drew to proceed, and if he deems necessary, deems it is, so, either the council already made a decision on it, that this should have been done a long time ago, which I think we're probably going to find. If not, then there's going to have to be surveying them. There's going to have to be, planning and zoning is going to have to be involved, because it's going to be a lot line adjustment. And so, I, I think you just, I don't know.
Hopefully Drew can find something, but if he can't find words, then.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking. Will I have to come back before this council to say, yep, we're willing to do that, and then go back to that plan?
No, we just go to planning and zoning, recommendation, and then you guys.
Perfect, that'll save you one step.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thanks, Troy. Workforce service water contract approval, Grant, do you want to?
Have you guys got this in your? The workforce service contract, it's pretty simple. We entered into a contract with them back in two thousand twenty-one. They're asking for an amendment. The purpose of the agreement is for low-income households that are having a hard time paying their water bill. It's U VAC that steps in and runs the program. And that is the agreement from two thousand twenty-one, but if you scroll up, Brian, to the very top, this part in bold is what they're wanting to change, right there in number two, and have the effect of retroactively to January first, two thousand twenty-three. It's not real clear to me, when I look at the definitions in the original contract, who client is right there at the end, because the part they're changing is if a household discontinues service with the water provider, which is us, the water provider must return any water benefit credited directly to the client. In the contract, it has D W S, like it does in this next paragraph for Department of Workforce Services. That and water provider are defined terms. Client is not, and so I'm not a hundred percent sure if they're saying they want return to D W S or to the owner. Yeah, whoever's in the household. It's not necessarily the owner, but because it could be a tenant too. But it's a agreement that Department of Workforce Services also has with the person that is living in the house. So I'm not too worried about clarifying that right now. The one thing that I would say for staff is that before we return anything, we would just want to follow up with Department of Workforce Services and ask them for their interpretation. But since this is what they're asking for, I'm not recommending any amendments. I would say, my recommendation is to approve of it.
Does that come back the same, sorry, Mayor, I was just going to say, is there any concerns with it being retroactive back to that? Is there?
I don't, do we know how many people, this replies to our councils?
Question is, do we normally refund if they terminate, there were utilities in the middle of a month?
There were provisions in the original agreement, but they're changing is where it goes. And so, that's why I'm comfortable.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. But that's why I'm comfortable with the way that it is, is we would just hold the money and give clarification to they think it's supposed, the credit is supposed to be returned.
My only concern is the retroactive. It seems like it's going to take a lot of work to go back and, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just curious.
Have we had, kind of, I mean, there are people that are part of the program, but I'm not aware of any, where they contacted us saying that we need to be returning credits, do something.
I'm not aware of any.
Would it make, would it make more sense that money would go back to D W S?
I think that's what they intended. It's just interesting to me, and I think that too, the client would be from our perspective, because they are the ones that are paying it. It's just entertaining that they go through this whole list of defined terms and then use a term that's not defined. It's probably the most important part of it, to see the money. But I'm not, again, I'm not worried about that, but I think it's Department of Workforce Services issue, not ours.
I would move we approve with the added that we get the client to find, or however you need to do that.
My recommendation would be to see that staff don't take action on it without contact, and.
Okay, I, okay, I can support that then.
Do we have a motion? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, my Councilman White, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thanks, Cody. Your motion passes. Next, we have capital purchase approval, Dustin. It depends on you.
Mayor, council, good evening. My name is Dustin Lawrence, the Roosevelt City Parks Director. Tonight, I am asking for permission and approval for a new Hustler brand lawnmower. It is a hundred and forty-inch lawnmower, which is a little bit bigger than what we run right now. Seventy-two-inch lawnmower, but the reason for the bigger lawnmower is we're getting really close to starting a new sports complex. We're all really excited about that. And we're going to be adding about fourteen to sixteen more acres of open green space we have to mow. And that's going to cause a lot of time for us to mow that, so the reason to upsize our lawnmower is just that we, we have a lot of grass to cut. With our currently thirty-two acres at Constitution Park, we have about fifteen at Centennial Park, we have roughly about eight at Central Park. So we have a lot of grass and a lot of open grass area. This will actually cut down the time quite a bit. And we do currently run Hustlers right now, they're a big brand. One of the lawnmowers that we're replacing is a two thousand fifteen, so longevity on that is really great. So I feel good about this lawnmower. I think it's going to last us a real long time. We take pride in taking care of our equipment, so I think this is a good investment. Your approval. Any questions?
I think it's important to note that it is, it was included in our budget, so it's not anything in addition to what we've already expected or anticipated in our budgets, so.
So is that the exact lawnmower you're getting?
It is, yep, and it actually, it's pretty cool. It actually makes it slide up, and you can transport that, you know, on a trailer, and then when we're ready to mow it, it's different, so it's part of the lawnmower.
It's neat that you can see the size. So we are actually replacing the other mower. We're not going to use them together.
Keep one around, keep one around.
We actually, we were looking to trade it in, but talking to the salesman, you know, because it's two thousand fifteen value, it would just be better for us to keep it and use it for emergency use. I think we can repair it, keep it for emergency as well, so.
Any other questions?
So the other one is broken down right now?
No, it's not. This, this is just, you know, with anticipation of sixteen acre, you know, looking to mow. And we also have a lot of quality to prep, so our time, we really need to be smart with our time.
Well, we've already, it's already a budget, but I think we approve this.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion is seconded by Councilman Bear, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I, I do have a question. Rhonda gave me the capital project request, and it shows approved by. Do we need to, does the mayor sign this? Do we sign this? We sign this? Just trying to follow the crook.
I didn't see Eric Brown tonight.
Mike, sir.
Come on. Mike, let's turn the time over to you for the next couple approvals.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. I'm Mike Loes. I'm the greenskeeper superintendent at the Roosevelt City Golf Course. On the day that I asked for the capital approval on the blade and, or bed knife and reel mower, or reel sharpener for the equipment that we own already.
It's also approved through capital projects as far as like the.
Well, we'll get to that, and we probably should have had the procurement policy discussion before this, but it's just fine, we'll get to it. But yes, it's something that needs to come before council for approval. And you have the amount.
I guess there is forty-four thousand dollars for the two pieces of equipment, it's two separate grinders.
And it does fall within our procurement policy. Grant's already looked at that, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that, but Grant, if you want.
We'd be asking to follow one of the exemptions, which is one ten K, and I'll just read it to you, so I have to look at it. It's probably under additional exemptions. It says additional exemptions may be granted by the city manager for expenditures of ten thousand dollars or less, or by the city council for expenditures of more than ten thousand, determined to be in the best interest of the city. We had another meeting, and I'm going to ask Mike to explain to the council kind of the reasons why it's beneficial to the city to go forward with this purchase now, and how we're saving a substantial amount of money.
These are reels, I don't, the main ones are the greens, you know, are the ones we mow greens, and we mow those greens at point one two zero of an inch, so it's actually a little over two, two millimeters. So these reels have got to be precise, and currently, we're paying a fellow out of Salt Lake to sharpen them, and it's about six thousand dollars to sharpen eleven reels four times a year. So that's twenty-four thousand dollars a year just sharpening these reels, where myself and my assistant already has the knowledge to sharpen them. The last time they were sharpened, I took them off the mower, took them to Vernal, and they were nice enough to allow me to sharpen them myself over there and use their equipment, which is the exact same equipment I'm asking to purchase now.
And Mike, the amount that.
You're saying the next.
So, yeah, the, the original amount, the new equipment is how much?
Ninety-eight thousand dollars. And this equipment, it is used, but it's immaculate condition. It's coming out of the R and T shop in Las Vegas, and they used it just to sharpen like a trade-in mower before the customer purchased it. And the, the, Mike said was rep at R and T, said, hey, we got this, let me find out if the owner wants to sell it. The owner's willing to sell it at under what new equipment.
Sounds like a good little meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the city's procurement policy normally, if it was ten thousand or less, Josh can approve it. Above that, we would need the city council to approve it without getting bids. The reason we're not getting bids, as Mike explained, it's kind of a unique situation where we're getting a specific piece of equipment for a reduced price. So we're just asking you guys to make an exemption for the purchase.
Any other questions for Mike on that particular items?
No, I would move we approve them.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second by Councilman Beggar, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, okay. Hey, Cody, if you wanna jump in here at any time and ask any questions or be a part of discussion, just don't hesitate.
Sounds good.
So the motion passes unanimously, up next, I think, Mike.
The second piece of equipment that I'm asking for is a sprayer slash spreader. This is a multi-use piece of equipment, it will spread granulars, and it will, it has room to spray fertilizer and that what it can be used for is fertilizer, it can use for pesticides too. We're gonna use it for strictly fertilizer on the greens. The greens have to have, you know, they gotta have different, different stuff, sugars, carbohydrates, chemistry, but, and, and this, this piece of equipment will be calibrated for all that, and, and it's really important to maintain, you know, those, those greens, you know, what a green would cost to replace.
Did you mention that one?
The cost of this one is twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, I have priced several of them, every one from a hundred and two thousand down to this one, this one here, the only difference than the big one is it's a sixty gallon of capacity instead of a three hundred gallon, and it's not GPS ram. This one here is still, you know, my miles per hour, my wind speed, my droplet pattern, everything is on this one versus, or except the GPS ram, it got the wrong marker on it.
Okay. Grant, did you have any comment on that one, or it was pretty straightforward?
More straightforward, the only thing that I think I can, is just that this one's a lot of really stated in. And so there's also an exception for getting bids, I'm comfortable with the process that's been followed.
Any questions for Mike on that one?
Curious, what are you using right now to do that job, is there?
Well, I, this year, the greens have only been fed a couple times, they should be fed every two to three weeks. And a couple of times they've used that, I've used my personal sprayer, which is calibrated for the fertilizer, but it's not calibrated for lack of sugars and the carbohydrates, I gotta give them since it's over ninety degrees. So that's, you know, where we're at in the summer, I just can't, you know, put stuff on it that potentially could harm them, you know, versus help.
What have we been using like over the last ten years to do it, like forty years?
I'm not sure if it's been done. To be honest, I don't know.
It would, it would help the greens a lot and...
The greens are looking in really good shape, I have to say, it's come a long ways, but, you know.
Well, I, I think, you know, the golf course is a beautiful asset to the city and I'd love to see it, you know, continue to green up more and, and become even better, this will help that and I'm good with it, but...
Do you want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, or we purchase it, and it, so it's big enough, sixty gallons seems kind of small, sit over that big of a court.
I use, mathematically speaking, it comes out to about nine to ten gallons per, per green, you know, each green is a different size. So I would, you know, just have to fill up to go do the back, you know, half the back and then catch the other half and then part of the front, you know. That's the only downside to it, it's just a few minutes it takes to fill it up. Plus, the upside of a smaller tank is you can mix it more accurately, you know, instead of trying to mix three hundred gallons, you know, or forgets the two hundred gallon mark or the one eighty mark or whatever that, you know, I'm mixing sixty gallons at a time instead of a large one.
All motion that we approve it, approve the sprayer, the golf course.
Motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman White, I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous, thanks, Mike, appreciate how you're doing up there.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, procurement policy discussion, this, I guess we could flop those around all over, it would make a little more sense on some of this, but that's totally okay. So there's been some question on the, one of the questions that we had at one of our last meetings was, what projects need to come before the council, you know, we have a, a general budget that's super good at the beginning of the year, do we have to prove things after the general budget, how does all that work, and there is an actual some answers for that, and so we, you know, Grant and I and Rhonda and Josh, I got together and we took a look at that and said, how can we answer these questions and give, give staff direction, but also have the council understand what's going on, that we're all on the same page. I'm gonna come to these things, and it really comes down to it's not as much about the project as it is, or the expenditure, as it is about the amounts, things like that. So Josh, do you wanna kind of help us and Grant chime in at any time, but it's pretty simple where we wanna start out, there are some things that we noticed in our procurement policy that they need to change or update and a few things, but, anyway, I'll kind of turn the time over to you and just chime in, and Grant, and Rhonda as you as well. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor hit it right on the point, as we looked at the state code and our procurement policy, it really does come down to an amount. Whether it's a capital project, general fund project, they're all, they're all just expenditures, and so as we look at it, we look at the amount. So what we want to do right now is just get some clarification and make sure that staff and council are on the same page. We are gonna work internally with Mayor, with Grant, with Rhonda about some proposed changes in the future, but to clarify things right now, we're, we're gonna stick with what we have adopted, which would essentially be anything below ten thousand dollars, now, these are things that are already approved in the budget, so nothing outside of has started to be approved, ten thousand or below ten thousand dollars, I approve. From ten thousand to twenty-four nine ninety-nine is an informal bidding process, we need to get three bids, solicit three bids, and then it'll come before council for approval. Anything above twenty-five thousand, we have to have the formal bidding process, and again, it comes before council. There are certain exemptions that were discussed or due today, and there's, there's quite a few of them in the procurement policy that you each have a copy of in there. But essentially, that would give some staff guidance, if they have an item that needs to be approved, a lawnmower that's fifteen thousand dollars, we can go to that, that's above ten thousand, that comes to council with informal bidding. So this way, it clears up a lot of things we're not worried about, is it a capital project, is it a general fund project? Simply, we're gonna look at the dollar amount, where does it fall, what steps do we need to take to make sure we are satisfying state code and the city procurement policy? And then we will work internally to bring recommended changes to council if we see that those are necessary to make the process even clearer and function better. That's perfect, do you have any other question that I think came up, and thank you, Josh, but I, do you have anything to add, I think that's pretty clear. The only thing I would add to that, and the other question that came up, is once a project is approved, let's say it is, let's say it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, does staff have to bring, and it's been approved by council, been bid, approved, and everything else is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure, but let's say it's invoiced out in three different invoices. Does staff have to bring those invoices back every time? And it's a little vague in our policy, so I'd like a little direction from the council, my suggestion would be not necessarily no, because it's already been approved, maybe updates as the project go along. But just to give Rhonda and the staff clarification, do you wanna see those come back every single time? Even though the project's made in, officially approved, the bidding process has happened, and no payment can be made until that invoice is approved for the amount over ten thousand dollars, or is it once the project is approved, any expenditure within that amount is approved and they can write checks as long as they can go over the total amount?
That's kind of how I thought it was going, or would like to see, I don't, obviously, I wanted to have the updates, but I just want staff to be able to get, you know, if we've approved the project, let's give it a go, especially, you know, you never know, if you can get something at a reasonable right then, so I, and once we've approved it, I'm good with just, and I know Rhonda does a great job when she gives the financials, if there's a, if it's been approved, she tries to put approved council or something in, in the notes for that so that we are aware, and if I have questions, I always, you know, ask, but I think that's a fair way to proceed personally.
If we can't make a motion, it is a direction from the council, so, just officially, because it is a little bit vague in our policy manual, right, on that one, the way you're, it explains that, but...
So just to clarify, we approved it in the capital project budget at the, at the beginning, you know, when we approved the budget, but then we're, you're talking about, we've also approved it as a project that's coming for the council in, in whole, at like a hundred and fifty thousand, after that, they spend the money, or are we talking, once we approve in capital projects, they're good to go?
Yeah, so you've hit on a couple of things, so we'll have to break it down just a little bit, on the budget, when we approve the overall budget, we have a list of capital projects that are defined in the general budget. When we approve the general budget, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna spend money on that project unless it's within the cost thresholds, the Josh's.
Yeah, right.
So even though we've approved the general budget, any expenditure within the general budget that is ten, yeah, ten thousand or less, he can just, anything between ten thousand and twenty-five thousand, basically, or twenty-four nine ninety-nine, would be something that would have to come before council, but it wouldn't have to go necessarily through formal bid process, it could be an informal bid process. And that's what our procurement policy says, anything over twenty-five thousand has to go through the formal bid process and then come before council. So the question is, that's how we will run, is when, once, let's say we have a twenty-five thousand dollar project went through the formal bid process, got approved by council, if there are two invoices for twelve thousand dollars that come in at two different times, twelve thousand five hundred, does Rhonda need to bring those individual invoices back for another approval before a check is come? Or can she just write the check because the project has already went through the proper process?
If it's already going through the process, I'm all for it, just letting them spend the money, you know.
That's what I was... And I agree with that as well, and because that was some confusion on one of the projects we had, like, yeah, go ahead and spend it, and then there was some caution, like, well, I don't wanna... And we'll clarify that ultimately in our procurement process. And then we'll also need to quantify our procurement policy too, so we'll go through that, we'll bring it back as an actual ordinance and quantify it. So do we have a motion to that effect, as long as the project is, and gone through the proper process and approved, that any expenditure regarding that project can be made?
Following our procurement, current procurement policy, I'll make that motion.
Is that clear enough?
Can you restate it?
Do you want me to state it?
Yeah.
So, as long as the project, so the motion is that for any project that's been approved through the proper process, procurement process, funds can be expended up to the amount of the total project without further council approval.
Following the procurement policy we have in place.
Yeah. The only time that would come back before council is if they have a change order or the amount was going to be above or beyond the originally approved.
Right, there's an approved service that we, you know, agreed to, somebody's bid on it, we've gone through the procurement process and it, and it comes out to fifty thousand, if we're invoiced three different times, those can all be paid without...
As long as it doesn't go over the total approval. I know that's kind of silly, but it is, that way, you, when she gets invoices, she can go ahead and, we have a lot of multiple invoices coming in, and those having to come back, council approval can be, they will show up and there'll be updates on the project, ultimately. Anyway, so we do have a motion then, you've got a motion, right?
Do we have a second?
Second by Councilman White. Any question, Cody, before I move, I haven't asked you on the others?
No, no questions.
Okay.
Seeing none?
To Mayor?
Yes. Thank you, seeing the other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, before I go off, there's three others projects that, Rhonda, I don't, you said something about these were already approved, or?
Two of them are major park, which had been, just as we said, had we brought before you, an emotion was made to go ahead and accept all payments towards this project as long as we stayed with them.
So we don't need to do any, anything other than sign them to say they were approved, so you can, okay. I just wanted to clarify that before I... And I apologize, I know you told me before, but I already forgot, so, part timers is alive and well. Here's the, I hope so, fantasy folder.
Next item is the Mayor and City Council term limit discussion, I know, for those that don't know, the council is creating the ordinance that puts term limits on the mayor and the council of eight years each, and so no council member or mayor can serve for a term of longer than eight years. There has been a desire to modify that, and the modification would be to potentially, as long as, as long as it wasn't more than eight years consecutive in one position, that can be extended up to twelve years, and what I mean by that is a councilman can serve for eight years and then serve four years as mayor, or a mayor can serve as eight years and four years as a council, but combined, no more than twelve years and no more than eight years in one capacity.
You're already campaigning for Dave. He eats posters, do you have that?
Yeah, you're out of here.
Next.
I'm just kidding. And, and I, I'm totally in favor with that, we would have to, I just wanna see what the appetite is with the council to move that direction, I just talked to one or two councilmen that that'd be a good idea, and the reason I bring it up, and then get to you, is we've also talked with Grant, where it's, where it's another, council could come in and change that through the same process that we implemented it. And what we wanna make it is something a little more permanent, and so we wanna go through a process, Grant, can you kind of describe the process, and then I'll go get to you.
A process where initiatives are taken to voters and the voters, in Pat's Law. The way that it works is five sponsors would have to put notarized signatures on application with their grants, and then they file an application and have to get signatures, it's a high percentage for a city Roosevelt size, Roosevelt size. Twenty-five percent of the active voters in, in the previous election would have to sign off, which is interesting, because only a majority of the voters are required to report the pass, so you're basically getting fifty percent of the votes you had made in those signatures. But I was double checking, because the council, or the questions have come to me from the council about initiating that process, it's not the council itself that would do it, it's voters, but I don't see anything that says that a council, council member, or even multiple council members can be one or even all five of the sponsors. It would create an interesting situation later, especially if more than one councilman was on there to go, because if all of the signatures are obtained, there's a few more steps in the process, but then it comes back to the council and to make a decision on it, and the council can either approve it or reject it. With what the council is wanting to accomplish, I think would probably... With what the council is wanting to accomplish, I think would probably happen, is that it would be approved, but sent to the people, is the language in the statute, which just means it would still go to the voters for a final decision. The other thing that could be awkward, if the council or the sponsors, that one of the options the council has is to do kind of a counter proposal, and then both the one from the five sponsors and the council's counter proposal could go to voters. So I, my recommendation, I guess, to you guys would be, if you participate, I would limit the numbers, probably to just one, and then see if there were four other people. Ideally, it would be even better if it was five sponsors who are not on the council, so there would not be any question, even if the council member needed to recuse when it was time to vote on it. Okay, now, that's the process, so the next step was, I was looking to see kind of what the timeline is in that, and unfortunately, what I found is that we're too late to have it in this upcoming election. It takes three hundred and sixteen days, or April fifteenth, before the next election, whichever is earlier, so right now, we can't get it on, obviously, by April fifteen, before our next election here in the city, we would be looking at probably April fifteenth of next year, the deadline we would want to be looking at for the application.
So, so right now, we could change the law, and we could give ourselves more time to serve, and this is just explaining to the public, whoever watches this meeting later on, or whatever, it's just, and, and I know it hasn't been explained, but, but this way, it's locked in, the only way I could ever get changes for the people to vote on it again, is that correct?
If we go through the initiative process, that's the only way to change. For the current version of the ordinance setting term limits, the council can change it, and you guys could change it to the way J R was discussing, where it could go eight years in one position, but then you could do four years in a different position. You guys could go ahead and change that in the ordinance, but any subsequent council could modify that, just like you guys are talking about potentially modifying the one that you passed a few years ago.
Okay, but, but once it's ratified by the voters, once it goes through this process, the only people that can change it is the voters, is that?
Yeah.
That's right.
Once the initiative passes, then, then, yeah, it would be the voters who can change it, and the voters can challenge it, so say that there were five sponsors, you guys passed it, it went to the election and passed, then there could be what's called a referendum, which is just basically the reverse process where a law is challenged. The referendum is an option for ordinances that you guys passed as well, but the code does make it clear that a referendum can also be used to turn around and challenge a law that's created by an initiative. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you very much.
How, you have a comment?
Well, you serve two terms, the councilman, is there, is there any hiccup in between being mayor, or can you be councilman four years, mayor four years, and does there need to be a break in between?
What we, the way it's written right now, and what I anticipate would, would stay, is that right now, you can serve eight years consecutive, and you can serve again, but you have to wait a sixteen year period. So I can serve when I'm sixty, if I wanted, again.
Okay, I'll, I'll write that in here.
Yeah, right. So in this, I would anticipate, you could serve eight, and then immediately another four is another, in another capacity, but you would still wait that sixteen years before you could serve again, and the reason for that is, the reason for that is, we want to, we want to avoid tunnel vision, we want to avoid, you know, people getting in and just, and it becoming something other than public service, right? And so if you're young, like some of us, I mean, really young, like.
Not me.
You know, maybe an option down the road, when you have time to step away from, you know, several years, and then maybe come back and serve again when, if time allows, or the need is there, but we just think it's healthy to break that to a degree, so that you can get new people in, new ideas, and.
You're not locked into twelve, and that's your head for your lifetime, you could, there's a.
Yeah.
You could shit out and then run again.
Yeah, but it's far enough that there wouldn't be, like, if you have a certain agenda you wanted to push, pretty sure in sixteen years, that agenda's going to be, if you feel that you're on the same agenda after sixteen year hiatus, you're more persistent than I am, dedicated, so. Yeah, and curious, how does the public feel in general about that? I've heard arguments both ways. We're pretty adamant that, that there needs to be limits for certain reasons, but just curious, anybody here have strong feelings one way or the other? You think the council's doing what they need to be doing in that regard, or you think we're going down the road?
Is there enough people that, that want these positions to be able to fill them?
There are.
Is the length not long enough for that?
That is a fantastic question, so the other thing that we're working on, that we'd like to get done, Dave's really been a supporter of this, a proponent, is creating districts in the city, because what we've seen in the past also, is the council can be very heavily weighted to one area of the city or the other, and so, and then there's the intimidation factor, a lot of people don't run because if, if they know they're running against certain individuals in the city that may have more prominence or more well-known, that's an intimidating thing, but if we were to create districts, then we feel like we would get more candidates coming out of the woodwork, and within those certain areas in town, people would feel more comfortable running, because they're only running against the people in that district, so we hope that we would, we would kind of remedy that concern by splitting in district. Go ahead, Dave, I'm talking about.
I think it would also keep representation throughout the whole city, and so, you know, you wouldn't be heavy on, I mean, right now, it's not, it's not, it may not be a result of, of not having districts, but right now, we have a lot of, on the north side of the highway, and, and, like, up, up by the park, there's a lot of stuff, and we're putting more, more diamonds up there, but like down on the other side of the highway, there's a lot of people that live there, and there's, there's, I mean, it'd be awesome if we could get a park down there, and having representation down there, they're always going to be fighting for their little area, so I think it's good to keep it balanced in the city, and make sure that we have representation every part of the city, so everyone's having similar opportunities to, to see parks or trails or whatever, where they live, so.
Mayor, I'm supportive of the, adjusting the ordinance according to your suggestion, and I'm very supportive of getting it as an initiative to get voted on by the people, see what they say, maybe if they agree, great, if they don't, then we'll know, but I, I think it's good to let them vote.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay, with that, I think, we don't need an official motion, but.
I don't have a chance, it just gives me some direction. I'll go ahead and draft the proposed ordinance for the council to look at, the initiative, anybody can spearhead it, but for the reasons that I said, I think ideally, it would not be members of the council who were the five sponsors.
But I think it's important to note, too, time is kind of a bee essence, because even though we have until, possibly next April, or the three hundred and sixteen days.
Well, maybe earlier of those two, and so, sooner than later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we want, if you know people that are interested in that and want to see that, we can have our wives do it, we can still kill it, but anyway, just to see if there's some people in the community that would be willing to sponsor that.
I just want to say, thanks for laying it out for us, yeah, I appreciate it, because I'm curious how that would work.
Okay, I'll have a proposed draft to you for changes to the ordinance.
Don't worry, bar, because hangers disagreeing.
One, one more question, if you're going to be doing that, so right now, it's eight years in a sixteen year period, if we're doing twelve years, would that still be a sixteen year period, or will you adjust that to eight, to twenty or something?
I would be leaving it at sixteen, unless you guys tell me to. But you can do that right now.
Well, you could just draft it up, and we can talk about that, so.
Maybe that would be twenty four, just kidding. Sixteen years is quite a long time between.
That's just a tiny, yeah.
Well, no, the clock wouldn't start ticking, the way I'm planning to draft it, it would be the same when you leave office, is when the clock starts ticking, so as long as you were in office, even if you switched to a different position, the sixteen years would not start until you finish that twelve year potentially. That's how many you want, so.
Yeah, maybe, Grant, I think Dave might have a point, it's, you can only serve eight years in a sixteen year.
Eight years, eight year break.
So maybe.
Four years. Sorry. You could, you could serve four, right now, as it's written, I think you, you know, any time in that sixteen year window, you can only just serve eight years, it doesn't have to be consecutive, you could serve four, take four offs, or four, take four offs, or four, and keep going that way if you wanted, right now, isn't that the way it's written?
Oh, look, I was thinking it didn't start until after, I'll double check.
Maybe we can have some discussion on that, too, because maybe sixteen is, if it's a twelve year period, sixteen is a long time in between, maybe it's twelve years in a twenty four year period.
My understanding is.
My understanding is.
I mean, wasn't that your understanding? I think that was more, like, yeah, when we got that, originally, it was within a sixteen year, I think, window, we could serve in public office in the city as mayor, you know, ten years of that sixteen year window.
Okay, and Josh just brought to me, and says, you know, persons should all serve more than eight years in a sixteen year period, so you're right. So say you wanted to go twelve years in a twenty four year period, or?
Be good a twenty year period, you know, twelve years in a twenty year, because my goal is just, for people to reconnect with, with the public, because, you know, you get the tunnel vision, you have your ideas, you try to protect your ideas, when maybe they're not the best ideas after, you know, a little bit of time, so it gives you a chance to go be a citizen again, and start feeling, you know, like the rest of them out there, before you come back to office.
I still pull that off, I still.
I just feel more fit, but I'm not gonna lie. Okay, so I'll draft it twelve and a twenty year period, so you're pointing, you guys can change it when we get to the process.
That's great, yeah.
Okay, the hangers?
Yeah.
Is this in the path of the year's meeting?
I haven't, I didn't see it. I didn't see it either, so.
Okay, how, that'd be an issue, how do you want to handle it? I'm just going to start with the most recent draft, and then make a few suggestions, but.
I can maybe give a, how we got to this point, this is something that's come before the council before, we're discussing several times, we've gone to our airport board and modified it, so currently, I'll just tell you what we do have, currently, we have two different lease agreements, we have a residential agreement and a commercial agreement, and when they were written, there were certain things happening at the airport that really drove the, the content of lease agreements, and that they weren't, they were very restrictive, and they weren't very conducive to growth at the airport, and so we wanted to present a lease agreement that was very simple, that definitely protected the city, but also gave the freedoms and liberties, and eliminated a lot of the restrictions, unnecessary restrictions on our airport to encourage growth. So Grant had went, gone to work in, to create just one single agreement that cover, you know, both commercial aspect and the residential aspect of the airport, simplify a lot of the terms, also make sure that we're still in compliance with F D A regulations and in other regulations that we comply by, and so this went before the airport board to be approved by them, and, you know, without going through all the details, they just, I don't know how else to explain it, but they made some recommendations, and so I don't know if we want to go through, maybe we can just go through those, take you off along with it, just each one, you want to start at the beginning, anything you want to hit on, Grant?
Oh, you want me to just take it over for me?
Yeah.
Okay, so on, starting with number one, the premises, this is just identifying a footprint where they're allowed to construct a hangar, the purpose, we've got it in there right now, it's for using an aircraft hangar, I would recommend that we modify that slightly to, the purpose will be space to hangar and aircraft, or for aviation usage, so that it could allow for, Cam, who has an example, to have a hangar and work the compliance. The term would be for a period of fifteen years.
They mentioned twenty would be their recommendation, and the reason is, is because it's hard to get a commercial loan on building, fifteen years is a very short period for a commercial loan.
Okay, let me say, Nate, that, I drafted this, so that would be the airport board is recommending that we modify that to twenty, I have an opposition on the length of the term. Compensation would be calculated by square footage, and would be set in the fee schedule, could be amended whenever you guys amend the fee schedule, the idea there is like, most of the other things we've been trying to put on the fee schedule, that there's a public hearing, so if people want to come in and comment on it, they can, there is a cap to the increases of five percent during any twelve month period. On relocation, as things develop out of the airport, we have ran into one situation where we needed to move the hangar for expansion, and there's a provision where we could continue to require relocation, if we're requiring it, it would be at our expense, they would have the option of terminating the lease, if they would rather do that than be relocated to, to the new spot. When it went through the airport board, they asked for a couple of additions, which I think would improve the agreement, one is that the spot that we relocated them to would have to be either already in or upgraded to a similar condition to the site that they were leaving, and I'll work on the language a little bit for that, but an example is, if they're in a position, location where it's paved all the way up to their hangar door, wherever we put them to, it would need to be paved at the hangar door, same thing. For the city paying for relocation, that would only be if we were paying for relocation on site, we're not going to allow them to decon, or pay to have their structure taken apart and then moved offsite. Rent would be due as soon as building plans are accepted, and building permits issued, that's another thing that we're for, that we modify. On the whole harmless, this is, real similar language to what we use in other agreements, just protecting ourselves from suits for any activity that would go on during the space that, that, in the space that they're renting. Additional rules and regulations, it's just said that laws, both federal, state and local law, and administrative rules, rules as an example, would have to be complied with, part of the agreement. We could enter on twenty four hours notice in number eight, and there's the insurance requirements in nine, and we're taking these from the old agreement that was for private hangars, the former rates in the commercial lease were higher, we decided to only mandate these, but we're thinking that in order for them to get commercial insurance, the insurance company's probably going to bump it up, and we decided that our recommendation to you is to just let that be handled between the commercial renter and their insurance company, and that we wouldn't be worried about it, again, we've got the whole harmless agreement in number six, and the release waiver subrogation in number ten, that are kind of standard from our other agreements. For abandonment, and this is just if any personal property is left in the hangar after the lease has expired, it would become ours, number twelve, breach, that either party can terminate the agreement for a breach right of the other party, their team's frustration of purpose, if. purpose. If something is destroyed to the point that it's unoccupiable, then they would be able to cancel the agreement. Termination in number fourteen. This is if it, there isn't a reason to cancel it under thirteen. They can cancel it for any reason they want. I had to put in sixty days, the airport board. It's recommending a hundred twenty days. I would recommend that you adopt the airport board's recommendation of the longer time period. And the reason is that when the lease is terminated, they can deconstruct the structure and take it with them. Sixty days just doesn't seem to be long enough to. Fifteen, first right refusal. If they want to sell the structure, then we would have a first right refusal to buy. Sixteen and through the end is just standard terms that include in almost all of our contracts. If we don't choose to enforce something immediately in number sixteen, it's not waived. Belivian severability is a single provision is found to be invalid, that's not invalidate the whole agreement. Turning speed is that prevailing party in a dispute can be awarded turning speeds. Notice is just saying where we contact each other in twenty. This is the entire agreement. We cancel any prior agreements we've had and if not mentioned in here, we decided not to mention it on purpose.
One thing I did remember is the subletting and subleasing.
Yeah, and actually, I've got a now that I need to add another provision. And you said this was talked about by the airport board. Was it just you recommending that?
No, this was just me actually recommending. I don't know that I brought it up to the airport board, but it wasn't the previous.
It was. And when we're talking to JR, there is one thing that I would be recommending here. And he was the one that brought it up. And that's the, I would like to add a provision and per subletting. And we don't have any issue with somebody building the hangar and then leasing that. At least, my recommendation is that we allow. But at all times, the person that we enter into an agreement with remains responsible to us for all of the provisions of the agreement. What they do subletting it is their business. If at any time they want to sell it or have somebody else assume the lease, that person would need to come in and enter into an agreement with us. And as I already said, if it was a sale, not just a new lease, we would have a first right refusal to buy it. So I would recommend we.
That would probably be a really good spot to put that, right?
Yeah.
To the the sale, first right refusal.
Yeah, well, probably, I think probably right. Okay, so having not forget, having questions about what's in it. My recommendation would be that we approve the hangar lease agreement with the addition of the airport recommendations that are laid out and the addition of this.
Subject to legal counsel review. And you did use that as the motion. So there you go.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Allen got kicked out of Zoom, so we're getting back on, and I missed that question.
Well, maybe the motion, yeah, so you're good. I just, that was, what Grant had said would be what we would want to see in that motion.
When you're ready, Sunshine. I would recommend that you make a motion to approve the hangar lease agreement as it was just laid out. The modifications recommended by the airport board, which are included in my explanation and the addition of.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve that.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion in a second. The council, buried on the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, Cody. You're back. We missed you.
Lost you for a minute.
Same. None of us that's seen unanimous vote. Motion passes. Thanks, Grant. Appreciate that.
Compensation. In your term limits thing, what if someone wins for a write-in? Did you have me address that?
With someone wins with a write-in? They would have to, they would still have to meet the criteria. You know, if they they wouldn't be eligible even for a write-in if they served more than twelve years in a twenty-four year period. And if we do do the districts, then they have to be a write-in for the district that they represent. Good question. Bill, do you have anything for us tonight? I just wondered if you're here for a specific professor.
I think we're just interested to see how the process works.
Oh, excellent. Well, I'm time out, Bill, so I can pick on it a little bit. Well, if you, we can give you some time towards the end if you if you have anything. We do have a comment period. We we're past that. But if you did have something, we we give a little time. Just because I don't see you very often, so.
He's retired now, so maybe he's doing something.
Yeah. Awesome. But you're here. Let's go to the Roosevelt City ordinance progress update. Drew, Sunshine.
I'm gonna hang out here though, because I'm gonna speak.
Just giving a progress report on our last council meeting, I believe. We had Mike and some of our C C group come and give a presentation on the progress of our code updates and changes potentially. He has posted the draft. Did you guys get a link to?
Yeah.
Do that in the Google Docs that you can make recommendations as well. Sunshine has posted that on our website as well, Republic Comment. And we'll see what we get as far as that goes. You, are you?
Yeah, I can show that.
What did you have?
I hope you don't mind if I do this from over here, but it's easier if I just run the mouse. All of you council members received a link to this webpage that basically describes the intent of the code update project. And then I tried to give fairly detailed instructions to the public because I know not everyone is as tech savvy and commenting on Google Docs can be kind of a pain. So I presented some instructions along with screenshots that when you click on them, they get bigger. So you can see how you need to go through that process if you want to comment directly on the document or if you want to just send an email to our code consultants there. Just, I guess, since I have you here, pretty easy to find when you're on the Roosevelt City homepage. That would load. Come on, thank you. Residents, you can either go directly to our city codes that are hosted now by Civic Link, which is R C C's company, or you can navigate to the code update page. If you go directly to the city codes, and this is also what the instructions show you, right here in the upper left where it says municipal code, you can click on that and click on municipal code update information. That takes you to our table, which has all of our titles laid out. And you can either choose to look at a title summary, which has the, has a summary of the changes that R C C has recommended. Or you can actually look at the title itself and see the proposed revisions in a kind of red line style that then can be commented on just by highlighting text, clicking the comment button, typing in your comment. So as you can see, I'm not signed into Google, so it would be anonymous. If you are signed in, it would populate with your Google username. That's just something to keep in mind if you'd like to be anonymous or not. Like, does the council have any questions about this?
I would actually be concerned about anonymity, you know, because you don't know who's commenting on those codes. I'd much rather have a B.
I I do believe so. The the issue is there's really no way for us to verify that. I do believe that on the backend, possibly R C C could look at the IP addresses, but oftentimes, if people have ad blockers or have internet privacy set up, those aren't even going to be those aren't really going to reveal where somebody lives anyway. So I think there's a little bit of trust involved here and knowing that probably people who don't live in Roosevelt might not have a reason to navigate to our draft code and comment on it.
I do have a question on that. Was that a recommendation from consultants to put it up there for the public to comment on that or?
That was a recommendation that I believe council gave and that I clarified with Josh before publishing.
I didn't give that recommendation. I think I did. I don't remember that recommendation. I do remember us wanting to look at it because they'd done all this work and we hadn't seen anything. And all of a sudden, it's dumped on us like the. Yeah, my my concern is I wanted for the council to be able to see the red line version. I might have said that wrong. Maybe that was, was that when I said it? And I'm assuming that I said it because I was the one who had it still last.
Slide you left to those directions of Josh, or you just publish right to the website. You take care of it.
Yeah, so the, so what I wanted was the code as it's written published to the website. And then I wanted the red line available to the council. So I didn't necessarily think that the red line was going to go to the public. I don't honestly mind if the public sees what we're doing, but at the same time, my biggest concern is that the council has access to all the red line versions of it, so. The one question I had was on what was posted as our city code right now, specifically. There is all the ordinances that that Sunshine forwarded to him that have not yet been uploaded in there. They're still not there. I know that we, at this point, they're probably not going to do any additional work without us paying, but we really need those on there. The most updated, like, we've got, I don't know, ten, maybe even more ordinances that have been passed by the city council that still aren't available to the public. And I feel like those should absolutely be up there. And we should be redlining those and not the old code. And that was how I felt from the very beginning. And I was surprised that he he hadn't gotten those things updated, so. Anyway, hopefully, hopefully, I'm clear in what I'm saying. If you have any questions about what I'm saying, I'm happy to answer.
You're following that. The one clarification I would like, would you like to take him down off the website?
I think it, since we have it up there, I don't know. What is everyone think? I don't care.
I don't think it's a big difference in a way, but then we get the public. And I don't have anything in the way. I thought it was, I'll just speak for myself. It was strange that it was out there that anybody in the public could could comment on, not necessarily comment, but just redline and things like that where they get that opportunity. We have the public hearings and everything else when we actually get it to that point. So I felt like it was strange. I didn't, I'm not faulting anyone because I didn't. That's why I asked the question. I was just like, you, you know.
Yeah.
So I thought it was strange. And I don't think it hurts anything. It's just one of those things where the council was definitely trying to be involved throughout the process to make sure that not only the council was planning, was owning commission, and those that are pointing to those positions to make those recommendations, we're definitely involved. I think that public is, but I don't think that's necessary. And that illustration of it could be somebody from Lil' Las Vegas ground chiming in and.
Which honestly, if they have a good suggestion, I mean, we should obtain it.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the top thing is there was other communities just get public involvement.
And that's the.
Yeah, we can take that.
I can give it up whatever.
I'm sure that I was, I'm not a very good communicator, so when I say things I can get, I know I did talk about citizens a little bit and how, you know, that we're voted in by the citizens and we represent them and that we should have involvement in laws. You know, we should be the ones ultimately responsible for legislation. Anyway, I don't know how how I might have come across, but that's okay. I want to go back and listen to it though, because I'm definitely curious what I said that might have implied that I wanted that, so.
I can say though, I'm just grateful for the process. And this is what we did anticipate in airport before as far as being able to be, see what's going on and and be a part of that process that moves along. So Councilman Bozenmark said that we don't get to the last minute and then bombarded by all of these changes. We're kind of seeing these things happen through the process. I think it's good and it's healthy, so.
Yeah, I think we should leave it. And but I I still want to know how are we gonna get our current code on there? What are we gonna do moving forward? Do we have to pay them more money? How does how does that work? Because my understanding is they were going to update all our codes and get them all online immediately. And when we approved the contract, it's a couple of years ago. And it never happened. And then I talked with them last meeting. And then he got our codes that were currently on the website, but it didn't have the updates in it. So I'm just wondering, what are we gonna do for that? How are we gonna get that?
Follow up with the company. Is that why I sent them the additional ordinance, right?
So we sent them all the information that we had with the impression that they were posting those. So if they have not, I'll reach out.
Maybe if you have some specific ones that you know, that maybe give it to staff.
Okay.
Let us know which ones we don't see there.
Well, everything that Sunshine sent him, because he did kind of pull her with a zip drive. Everyone's in the past was not yet published. So basically, all those need to be put in there still.
We have a copy of that as well, so that, like, Councilman, the ones that have been, the ones that have been modified or approved but aren't updated, so that we can.
Yeah, because like, I'm in our city files. I have them all. Do you want them to be sent to council? Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm wondering, so that we can look at the ones that we passed or other people have passed that aren't being reflected correctly on.
Is it all right if I just forward all the email that I sent to him? Because then he'll have, he's in a folder with all of the.
Yeah. I think that'd be.
Which I believe we should have. I know I have it already, so.
Right.
We would all like to make sure what's going on.
Okay, just find out. We can, we want to record. I'd love to see those on there.
They need to be, they were sent the information, so if they're not posted, then we'll get on. In fact, I spoke with Mike today and kind of getting a plan, looking forward, getting you guys the information, breaking it down into titles, not overwhelming. Suggestions that we talked about, there's a lot of short titles that we could group together and not drag this out as long, longer than they need to. Planning zoning, that's going to be one that they need to attention and a few others. So how would you guys like to see that progress? If we kind of structure that and bring bits at a time to digest or rather than the whole thing?
It is kind of hard to, it's like the eating an elephant, right? All at once or one bite at a time. And it is an elephant. There's some. So my, my suggestion would be, obviously, planning zoning should be the ones initiating the recommendations for all the land use ordinances pertaining to fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. We could probably tackle, right, you know, then work that end. We can start at the one, two, three, and so forth. And however many you think we can tackle at a time, a block, and that's focused on one, two, or whatever you think is reasonable. Because some of them were larger than others, obviously. But taking those sections at a time and just so that we, instead of us looking over the whole code too and making these recommendations that are throughout the whole code, we're actually focused on our time and effort on these specific blocks as we go.
Because I think we could work through them very quickly if we did that.
I agree with you a hundred percent. If we prepare just enough that we won't bog you down too much and do it, you know, strategically that way. And also the briefcase of the titles that they prepared, those are very because they basically outline what has been changed instead of going through the whole thing. That's why it's, it's, will be helpful, I believe.
I just had a question, Mayor. As I looked through some of those, some of those are just suggestions from other cities, what they do, or some of its actual like language cleanup. Would it be better to focus on, you know, the the language cleanup or whatever the important part and and maybe the suggestions we can address? I I don't know. I'm I'm just trying to think of a process because I because I noticed there were suggestions that these cities do this or this. And and I I think suggestions are great, but to me, I think we need to hit the code. Personally, I think getting that code language and things that are maybe inconsistent between, you know, different areas, maybe that's where we focus on. But we can address the suggestions as 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 we have time, maybe. I don't know. Just just a thought.
I like the idea. I think that if we do break it down into just a couple of titles at a time, then we could even incorporate some of those recommendations into that because it would be thing is, change the, it's not real hard to change the order, but it is quite a long and drawn out process.
Right.
Okay, so we want to get it as close to perfect as we can, obviously, knowing that there will be updates. And Grant's been awesome. He can, he can help with the clarification. Obviously, Sunshine and Drew, they're great at that too, but players and things like that. Throwing them out there. And then I think maybe what we. Throwing them out there. And then I think maybe what we focus on is not so much clerical errors, but maybe we focus on the recommendations and what we feel.
And that's, I'm just trying to clear that up is what what which direction we should go because I because I noticed there were some just, you know, typo clerical errors or or things that need to be cleaned up, but then there were recommendations based on what other cities do. And some of those made sense because, you know, how times have changed, et cetera. And so my worth looking at. So I just, whatever the process, I just want to make sure we're kind of, you know, have a kind of a process that we want to look at so that we're on the same page.
Yeah, I think you're right. Would you have a recommended way of going through this? Because I know it's got to go to a public hearing and there's there's ways that it has to be done that way, but like what's the most efficient way? I think one chapter at a time is the best. If we have a designated meeting where we're going to review the comments and everything in that one chapter that's come forward and we know that that's that's what we're doing, we announce to the public, we go through that in a work session, then we give it to you potentially to put together and then we can do the public hearing and and approval.
Break it down. I mean, you can do it either way. You can hold, go through it, whatever batch you want, and then have a public hearings and do one approval for the whole thing. But I think my recommendation would probably be to break it down into at least three or four different public hearings and so that you're getting stuff approved and it should go along, not necessarily like one a month.
Yeah.
Team chapters. We did three or four time, or maybe in the beginning do more because the land use stuff at the end is so much bigger.
Right.
And then, oh, I think I did two weeks ago about a day for the way that you guys worked through it too, because I was trying to do my own review and make comments. I think I could either go through and make my comments and forward them to you guys and then you have their recommendation and then mine would be a red line. Or we could do it the other way and have the work meeting. You guys could go through their recommendation, tell me what changes you wanted and then I could make my own recommendations. Either in the meeting or after. Either way works. I think you guys just need to tell us how you want to do it.
I kind of like the second way. I I it seems like a lot of extra work for you to figure and you'll, I'd rather hear your comments as we kind of go through them. Personally, I I I, you know, and you got a lot on your plate anyway. I just think it might be easier for you to have read them, kind of know what your thoughts are, but then just bring them and maybe at the work meetings we could do, you know, depend upon the link two or three and 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 proceed that way. So.
Yeah, that's what I think too. And to be honest, looking at codes, I've briefed over them over the weekend and things and well, there's several that are pretty short.
Right.
There's not a lot of substance to them. They're, you know, we can get through those pretty quickly and so maybe should we just, we've got to at least give some direction to staff. But my suggestion would be maybe let's look at one through four right now and then by our next work meeting, if everyone will, I can say for staff and for council, we're saying from here until our work meeting first of August, that's what we're going to focus on and should have a pretty good idea within those work positions. It's more than a few hours to read through those and get our recommendations. At least we can get that portion to the point where if we don't feel a hundred percent comfortable, we're well, well on our way. And by the second meeting in August, maybe we can schedule a public hearing to
Right.
to review any of those changes and also get the grant. That'd give us a whole month from now basically to go through the first four chapters. Within three or four months, in my anticipation, and then with the planning zoning work from the other end, we should be able to have most of this.
So the only concern with this timeline is that chapter two, well, title two, chapter four, which is basically the law, is so if we go over chapter two as a council by expert, we're going to go over the wrong type two.
I've seen that during.
So we need, we need to have the law in the red line. We're reviewing the red lines. We need, need to review the current law, not the law that was passed ten years ago or whatever. Because and that's been my pain, that kind of kind of frustration. It's just that we don't have the current law posted. It's never been published. We passed the laws years ago, but they've never been published. And I don't want a red line anyway.
So. In the email that Sunshine was sending.
Yeah, so we just have to make sure the council, I mean, we could still do our review of title two, but we would just need to make sure.
We're reviewing the one that's in.
And we can have them update that and send us a new.
Yeah.
Okay, if you can do that on the else, right?
And there's.
I don't know. If I, I was.
So as along those lines, there's been a lot of legislation changes to the land use ordinances as of this last legislation and talking with your we need to make you guys aware of those changes, but also they need to be reflected in this update. Looks there or not yet. So those are, that's going to be a change.
Yeah, so I, so with what Councilman Bear is saying, do we, how long do you think it would take all of our current code to be published online, be redlined? I'm just curious.
I'll make a phone call tomorrow and if, I think it's just a matter of having Mike get that because Sunshine's already saying it's going to take great.
I I would say though, direction wise, we shoot for the four. If we only get three of them, then it'll still be it. But let's shoot for the four. I think that's a good str- uh, goal.
And will you let us know as soon as it's updated? If we're working off the email side of things, I think for citizens, if we are and out there for them to be able to redline, they definitely should have their most current code. And we're going to get that up there as quickly as we can.
Well, we do have the email once we did work. And then on the planning zoning side, do you want we need to have them start working on title seventeen and sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
I would. I mean, I definitely would because ultimately they're going to make the recommendations. They should make the recommendations to council. We'll get that on their agenda then. We don't want to steer them. That's the way, that's the reason. It's like, there's good direction.
Thank you. And one other thing, just about rural community consultants. Um, if we need to put on next month's agenda to get back into renewal, contract renewal of the mine, we have to do that. I'm pleased with the product that I'm seeing so far. I love it. And I think, you know, as long as they can, we can keep things moving forward, I think. Let's keep it going. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Next, the RFP. We're actually going to, Josh put up on the agenda, he says that he wants to do a little more before that comes before the council. So we'll cross that off list because I got Josh. And then we'll go right on the secondary phase three ground approval. Ryan, you've got the next optional. So we'll give a couple of time to you.
I need to get up and stretch. Okay, what we have here first, a couple of weeks ago, we went out, we applied for a grant opportunity. What this is was for water conservation. So we were thinking secondary water. How can we get secondary water spread out through town even more? As you're aware, we were roughly using, I would guess about sixteen hundred acre feet. We committed three thousand. So we we do have some water there to spread out for citizens. Um, this particular grant through DNR Water Resources. And the max on on the projects was two million dollars. Um, so that was the most we can go after. And we were awarded two million dollar grant percent across the board, so. Basically, I'm just asking if you want it. If not, we'll be saying, oh. We don't have to put that even deep in the blunt, but I do have a map of Sunshine. If you can just, I think it's two over. The very end, one I gave you. Nope. Oh, crap.
Is it in Firefox?
The one to the left. Okay. And what Jones and Mills proposed that we do with this two, I'm just kind of showing you this map so you can kind of get a vision of how far this two million dollars will stretch. Doesn't look like a lot when you look at that, but we're going after the low hanging fruit. The biggest bank for our buck, the most condensed areas that can use this water. Um, one of them was Sunrise Knoll by the golf course. It's already in two hundred north. So we tapping on that, looping it there. And the other one was down ten eighty south. They're south of town. And there was one more jog. Oh, crap, my my vision's terrible. Anyhow, it's just a hair more south on the okay, ten eight, eleven fifty, eleven fifty south and then finishing off Gales Acres.
What, what? The red line in Gales Acres and the proposed secondary water line?
Yeah.
We have a irrigation system already in there and we, so.
They may not use it.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
You have a homeowners association that can.
Yeah, we, we, we share a irrigation watch. So so it's it's not a necessary thing there. You're not going to be, you're going to use Roosevelt City's water instead of the water we already own that irrigation watch. So that's just a consideration to.
No, I love it. I, to be honest with you, I was actually hoping to find a little room. Um, Drew may not like in this, but there's a portion of the cemetery that needs to be addressed too. So maybe it's not my decision though. We'll obviously do.
I just don't know how.
I didn't think of that.
The duplication of the.
Yeah, I just don't know if they use it or not. If you already got water there and it's hooked up to your system, I don't know.
He might think mad of you because everyone has to pay a five hundred dollar connection fee.
Right, right. When, when, when we have that in, when the first talk of secondary water was the consensus was, we already have water. We're not going to pay to have a hookup for something we already have. But.
No, I'm.
They're in, they're in the system there. We're using irrigation water as much as we can. So if there, if there's a better area to use that for, then we're not going to be missing out.
I might be getting ahead of myself here too. First, we've got to see if you guys even want the bodies. So we do need a motion.
Go to a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Seeing that motion passes, you know, I mean, I will, I do have to say Jones and Mello had really stepped up in trying to get us grants. Ryan's been working hard with them to do that as well. And they've been super successful uh, in in pulling money to our area. And so appreciate all that you're doing that way. That's a significant chunk of change. And this is not the first time that's happened. So, you know, we just need to get it done.
Yeah, so.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks to.
Yeah, yeah, moving on. Before I go into my fifty page PowerPoint, I'm going to oh, you guys are driving night, by the way.
Can we, can we debate?
I don't want a bottle of water.
Sleep.
I'm drinking water.
Um. I had a discussion with with Mayor Bird and also Josh. I Josh put together this this checklist for the capital project and we think it will be beneficial for you guys to have this in the packet. So what what the plan is, is we'll have each project, a quick brief history and an update and basically a step sheet on the current status of that project. So I want you to kind of review it. Um, you don't need a, I don't need feedback tonight. Don't email me at two in the morning saying you have an idea. Just, just kind of redline what you think and what we can add to that and what you'd like to see. Um, because we do have the information. It's just compiling it all into one area to get it to you guys. You guys are aware of what's going on with the project. So with the capital projects, we do have several right now that's going on. Some of them are already done. Um, we do have some that's going to be coming. The reason why I'm showing you this slide is that QR code down at the bottom. We're working with Sunshine's been a lot of great help. She's created a a quick link to a special page we call special projects with Roosevelt City and it'll have current updates as far as what's happening. So if there's questions, your concerns, people can see it, they can go there and see what's going on. So and I'll kind of, if you want to move the next couple of slides. So sports complex, for example, we'll have the site plan on there, the latest update as far as what we're doing and the project plan. We'll have other plans as well. On this particular one.
Go ahead, Ryan. Do you see the sidebar components now?
Yeah.
Just.
I need, I need. Go, go back one. The design that we had fit out is hair different than this, so I need to get an updated plan. So and we might go back to that. So anyway, I'm kind of curious, now that we brought it up, the trail that, find what path that's going to connect right there where she's at, the path to the ball fields is not in the one that we just made out. So just be thinking on the next council meeting, will they be asking if you want to actually have that? It's an upgrade or a link, the trail system to the facility or not?
That's a question for another day. But, you know, did, sorry, someone told me today, I work, I work with that Arnold made a big mistake in their, their four flex or whatever, like all these, uh, anywhere. Um, and their home plate floods every time there's rain or every time they clean the bleachers, we have drainage system in there to prevent stuff like that.
There'll be natural drains. Hopefully, we're going to get.
So we're, we've at least accounted for where the pump is going to go to the water. It's not going to get on the.
Is what Barry like to do that with one of our fields right now, that's the ones to deal with.
Okay. Okay, well.
He's made it clear that we don't want to make that mistake.
Just because I heard somebody talking about it and they told me, don't make this mistake. I just thought I'd bring it up.
No, that's good. Um, so Ed Land's, his project, Jones and Mills are engineered. The total estimated cost was three point five million. CID alone, Roosevelt City's chipping in a little bit. The percentage I put on here is kind of a rough guess. I do have a formula created for the major park. It gets to be more precise percentages of the project completed. So that's just a guess right now. And Jones and Mill hasn't sent us a bill yet, so I'm assuming the next time I show you the update will be some money spent, so. And the deadline, I put spring in twenty twenty four on the contract. It's actually the October of this year. But I put spring twenty twenty four just because that's when we want to start playing ball and using this facility. And Councilman Rowby and Cody assigned this. Current activity on it. Um, we're still going through the designing stages. We're almost done. Armor construction of contractors. They'll be moving their equipment in Monday, so you'll start to see activity up there. I I doubt Monday where it's a holiday, but probably Tuesday or Wednesday. So I took that picture. I kind of liked that picture. Well, going to the next one. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. It's the top left one. That was early in the morning and uh, we had nineteen campers camping out in our parking lot during this tournament. It was just girls softball tournament. So thought it was kind of interesting, the potential of what these fields can do for our area. And obviously, this is just a before picture. As we get going on in the project, I'll have pictures showing updates of progress and what's being done. This is the banner that we've created. So I've got these hanging up there right now. A few guys have seen them hanging up by the project. Um, this is the banner that we've created. So I've got these hanging up there right now. A few guys have seen them hanging up by the project. But what the goal was is to kind of let the public know, hey, this is what's coming, when it's gonna be coming. Obviously QR code down there. So we can have a quick access to more information. So I hope you're all right with that. I kind of, I kind of took that in your hands. So I think that's all right.
Just, oh, sorry, Regal. I was just gonna ask him the. We talked about the pickball courts and the ones we're going down to Central or whatever. Is that still part of this or is that a separate thing?
It's gonna be separate.
Okay. That's fine. I was just curious.
The nature park, you've seen the design on it. Nothing's changed far as the design goes. It's still gonna be the same. Well, I hope it's the same way out because it's cut. So it's there. The project costs, just a fresh reminder for all of you is one point two million for the phase one. Um, the funding, we've gotten three, there's seven total. Funding opportunities, which making it complicated trying to keep track of everything, but it's been great because. Um, I put forty nine percent complete. Hopefully, I'm somewhat close on that. Um, little one hundred seventy two thousand span. The uh, Councilman signed. Do, I've got the mayor on this as well as Rowby and Cody. On that. So that picture, if you smell, sorry.
Ryan, one thing that I think would be important as I'm seeing this naked even on this is. And Dave brought up a good point. When the public sees that this is a one point two million dollar project and that we've spent. Hundred seventy two, they don't, they can see also the grant, even though. It may not be Roosevelt City's money, but the grant that's come in for that. So that the public can see, yeah, it's costing one point two million, but actually. Majority of that is grant, right? I think, I think, I think that's important to put up there so that they see how. What the job that you and the rest of, and Sunshine and the rest of the staff are doing from the ticket. Money coming in for these projects. So it's offsetting taxpayer dollars.
Well, that's my kind of risk and stuff. Yeah. Well, our first, um, first out of our rec grant was a hundred fifty thousand. We're working on that right now. Uh, Rhonda is, we sending that in for reimbursement. So. Let's reverse everything that we've done so far. Um, it is deceiving. The pond is. Probably ninety percent done. And that was through that W R I, that's through the um, D W R and. Then getting funding for that as well. So. Yeah, I'll update that. So. Current activity, we're, we, we have the bridges in. We're trying to get them to their. Location. It's been kind of interesting with what equipment. Engineering farm boy type thing. I don't know. We have set the first bridge in and everything went good. Um, if you go down there and look, the decks aren't poured yet. Just FYI, so be careful of the water. Um, the pond, it's full of water. It's, it's looking good and. Almost ready for fish. I know the fish are ordered and coming from all over. I don't know. You guys can run the fish things, but. I think old catfish is coming from Arkansas. So. And the trails are all been cut. Um, they have done some seeding. We're kind of waiting for. Weather to cooperate on that and do some more on that. And the water lines are all finished. Um, land easements is kind of the one thing that's kind of gonna struggle. We've got them all but one. Working on the east side to get signatures and then we'll work on the west side. These are just a few pictures of how it looks down there. So. Overall, it's been a good project. And then that's the banner. Same QR code too as well. Any questions on the?
Does the hospital get these updates as well?
Yeah, yeah, we, Jim, we've been having our meetings. Jim's been involved in this. And we, why you mentioned hospital close to, I know we had a deadline to do certain things and get it all. But most of it's getting close. And they're willing to work with us. They're seeing progress. Ask them. It's gonna be, so. Um, another project we're doing that's making some pretty good progress, all the segments, the shooting complex. This is just the general. Um, there is more design to it. Um, but. This is the overall shot of it. And Mayor, if you want, he can chime in on this one too. So. We did ship the go bags, sorry. I wanna comment. It's easier by the way, the mouse is. Um, the mayor did suggest moving that two hundred yard range. When we went out there on site, it's a lot different when you're actually there. Compared to doing it from Google Earth. And so it made a lot more sense to put it down lower because of terrain and ledge. Which worked out perfect right now because now we can save half of that pit. We don't need to tear that out. And it's not in line of sight of the guy shooting from the six hundred yard or a thousand yard range. We're not. Kind of in their line of sight. So. Um.
Yeah, I think that that was the original thought and then somehow communicated. For the, like Ryan said, once you might have looked at it after the stakes were there, it was. Yeah, it's just one of those things.
Better option. So Edland's gets roughly one point three million project. Um, we're still working on the funding source. Fingers crossed, we feel like we've got a pretty good opportunity to get this thing fully funded um through grants. So. Um, can I make a comment on that too? Just because this one, so.
There's been a couple of things going back and forth with this project. First of all, this project was presented. Towards one, one point five million dollar project. And it was approved by council to go and seek the funding for that. The funding fell through. We backed up when we did our budget um last, let's see. Where it would've been this budget, but we brought it back to council and said, but we're not gonna be able to get that funding. Do we wanna proceed? And council said, well, let's proceed with, ease it out with what we have. As soon as we made that decision and as soon as the D W R, is it D W R or D N R? Heard that we were gonna proceed, we immediately got another phone call saying, hey, this funding's still available. So anything that you do that. Before you get the funding, this grant will not be able to be utilized as match towards the grant. And we have to come up with twenty five percent. Match. So currently in our budget, we have three hundred thousand allocated for the. This project. We're anticipating nine hundred thousand will come in as a grant, is what we're being told. And then we have a lot of people willing to donate. So what ended up happening is where we were approved to go so far, but we didn't want to forfeit our grant. We decided, let's not spend any of the city's money. Those that are willing to donate, let's go ahead and start the project. And get so far on the project and then we still have our match funding there. So. It's kind of a quasi, but this will come back before the council. We went ahead and started on that. The uh. Portion of this being donated, I guess, would be the best word for that. But then, when the funding for the remainder of the project comes into play, that'll come back before council. To be again, reapproved as a much larger, like a project versus the smaller project. So it's kind of a.
Just a question. I know last time we talked about budgets and the three hundred thousand was not initially. Did we find that? Rhonda?
When it was.
It was, okay.
Yeah, when they updated.
Okay.
The approved budget was.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. Just wanted to explain that, Brian. No, I was worried. Why it's geology just a little bit. But we don't, we. We've had this project on the docket for a really long time. Um, we have a lot of people in our community that are. Excited about it. You can see all this work that's being done, is being donated to the city. If we can get that nine hundred thousand, if we wait a little longer, we'll, we'll have money to forfeit for being a little bit um. Impatient and so. That's kind of, it'll come back before the council will be able, when we, if and when we did that funding. If it falls through again, then we'll come back. What accounts? And say, we'll go with three hundred thousand yet. So it's.
When would we anticipate that?
We're hoping by fall. Jones and Mill has been really good working with those guys and getting all the information that they need. Um, I did try to contact Gary Kerbekin and I left a message. He didn't call me back. He's the regional rep for D W R. Who's would be the one to submit the application forms and everything else. No lack of communication there. Hope by this, this fall, keep some pressure on. There's another.
No, I was gonna say, I'm assuming uh Dave and Dawn are good with me and the councilman. I'm not sure.
That's fine. Okay. I'm okay with that. Just the, just to kind of date on the project.
Yeah, we'll have meetings that you'll.
Be invited to.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm fine with that. Thank you. I like team meetings. If you do that, just remember.
Okay.
What was you saying there? I was just gonna say, there's something, there's another potential in the works for this fall if things line up with getting. Some more of that donated. We're working on that, but I don't dare say anything yet, but. Um, there's just been a lot of positive response from the community on this.
Yeah, and I didn't put much far as current activity. I mean, the entrance drill's in. It's, it looks good. I feel like how they've done that. Obviously, the two hundred yard range and then um, will be, will need to be. There's a couple of things we'll need to come to you on for a little like. Just trying to figure out the best route, cheapest route to do this. So, right now, we're likes working on that. So. Okay. Oh, and then I did drum up a banner. I have not printed off. I kind of wanted to make sure. Okay, so. Pretty simple, but uh, just trying to get the word out there. And then kind of show off who's been helping us to lose key.
We can talk about that another time, but just be thinking some of the sponsors that have really stepped up to help us with these and that. Ones that have donated. We will be, we wanna come up with a way to recognize them somehow appropriately. And so that'll be. Something we want the council, the council involved with too.
Yeah, for sure. And then the last project is the Innovation Hub. We've kind of hit some snags and I know you guys are aware of that. We. We, the original design we had out and obviously we were shooting for the stars, redid it a little bit, went out for bid. The bid still came back really high, even on the downgrade. That we did before. So now we've kind of really simplified it. This is just a snapshot of the outside of the. Um, when we redesigned it too. So we're focusing on. Um, the outside right now and getting every model we'll get up. We'll have to come back. We'll have a bid package for it too as well. So. Um, these are just before pictures. Um, obviously, I don't have any um, accurate pictures. I wish I did. Um, but the cost, that, that cost is a very, it's just an estimate. And I called Craig on that and he. He was about to, he knew on that outside shell. So really don't know. That's, that's just an estimate. Um, and we do have. A grant for this as well. Still, it's active. It's at R C I C. It's like a big force. And then Dave Barry, Dave and Dustin, if you guys are on board to be. Part of that. And I think our next meeting is tomorrow is this.
It's on the ten AM?
Yeah.
I know there wasn't a Zoom link, but. We'll be able to make.
No, we need to have a timing. You can call in if you want.
I might call in.
Okay.
How much was that grant? We got three hundred?
It was pushing three. It was two. Yeah, three.
I was thinking it was close to that.
Yeah. But as you can tell, that it's gonna be a huge, when we get this thing cleaned up, it will be a huge upgrade to that block. I mean. I'm not saying it's terrible, but it's definitely not eye soothing, I guess. It's not. Yeah, I don't know how to word it, but anyway, that's the update on these projects. So. Every month you'll hear from me, but I may go in more depth on the projects as well too and not maybe all of them. Yep, on some. Any questions, concerns?
Alex is great. Yeah, thank you. You guys are working hard. You're doing a good job.
Right, thank you.
Just wondering what other projects we could go on for this year? Josh, I know it has two or three. He's trying to. Thanks, Ryan. We have the city manager report and committee reports. This night proposal session tonight.
Purchase orders just before that. Can I move, we approve purchase orders? I have one thing to go with.
Where's the purchase order?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the purchase orders that were presented.
I'll second it. Second my councilman's there in all their favor.
Aye.
No, no motion passed. Alright, go ahead, Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick, quick updates. The ballpark, the playground, if you haven't heard, is closed. They are installing the shake structure. Um, Dustin has received some really positive feedback from the community. Super excited about that. State Street projects should be concluding this week. Their chip's still in it, getting that done. So been a really good project as well. Um, ultimately, I'd like to shout out starting my city manager report. I just wanna thank staff. Council was involved this past Fourth of July. Activities were phenomenal. If you had an opportunity to come down, it was busy. It was crazy. In all the good ways. Um, a lot of fun, a ton of people, and it's just turning into a very large fun event. Um, we're just very grateful for everybody that participated because those truly are community events. Any questions, Marine?
Well, thanks for all you do. And I appreciate the work. Appreciate everything we do. Um, committee reports, do you have any from council?
Um, just wanna again thank the Interfaith Council for the cleanup as well as for the Sunday. Concerts. There's one more in August, Back the Blue, the third Sunday. That'll be at seven o'clock. Encourage. Anyone to come to that. But they've been, they uh, they're just kind of fun. They're pretty casual. Uh, but there's a lot of, uh, it's amazing the amount of talent we have in the community, uh, in Roosevelt and even surrounding. Communities that come and, and support that. And, and I really appreciated the, the, the work on the cleanup, what they could do. Hopefully, we get some momentum going and get a little more participation going forward. But I thought for the first time. Uh, it was really good. We got a lot, quite a few things kind of cleaned up and. And hopefully, we can move forward with that. So anyway, I thought they're doing some good things. Uh, I think that's all I have, but I just wanna make sure we thank them for their efforts.
Thanks. Company was marked out a hundred percent.
We didn't have any U L T T business.
Thanks for that. Talked about, so. Same here, other than I would like to personally thank the staff and also our, our committee for everything that they did. Um, and have been doing the last of a while. It's been amazing to see uh, some of these things happening in our community and. And we're bringing in all the projects that we have going on and the events that we have going and.
I've been impressed with the Frisbee Golf too. They're all over the place. It's awesome. They've got. I mean, it, I, you're right. The A P R is just doing outstanding job trying to provide. You know, activities and opportunities for people and communities and they deserve a shout out.
And part of that is the staff. I know, you know, it, they have the ideas and they, they're implementing some of those, but then really staff has been. Buying into those and on board and supporting those and, and uh, and making those come to fruition. So it's, it's definitely a joy after. Appreciate all the efforts there. So, Cody, do you have anything? So, Cody, do you have anything tonight?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Are there any items for future discussion that we need to address tonight? Okay, um, would like to go into closed session very briefly for, uh, land, um, negotiation.
Okay.
And so.
And maybe we go into closed session, discuss land acquisition and land.
Oh, Bill, did you want any time? Did you want us to turn?
We have some concerns, but.
No, come. Yes, please. We love to hear such.
I noticed when you were talking about secondary water and various things and. Up where I live is three forty north, eight hundred east, down by East Elementary. So, maybe to that area. And I know that the project that was started some years ago and just. And just wondering about that. And then also.
Is it something that you want down there? Something that you're desiring to have?
It would be nice, yes. Something to be, to have it considered.
Okay, perfect.
And then also, uh, we were looking at sidewalk. Our street itself, the eight hundred east, does not have the sidewalk yet. That was money that was allotted several years ago too, and it just diminished and we never. And our road, we get a lot of children walking right there to east and just can't get.
That's what I was gonna say. There's a safe, safe, um, there's a grant for those sidewalks and I have some information on that and maybe we can look into that as well. Um, because I can't remember what it's safe, something safe, safe sidewalks, especially around school zones. And so that's something that we could probably, and need to.
Well, the other streets, about it, that are Main Street where the Hudson and the direct route to the elementary.
Yeah, which would be a perfect, uh, project for this type of, uh, by grant funding. And we can look into that and. We're definitely looking to this. Well, thank you so much. You fixed the curve.
Oh, well, the curve matter is part of that. We, we're hoping with the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Improvement, so.
Excellent. We're going to take a look at that. And we have plenty of staff here that I know are, that ears burnt right up. We'll be starting to mention that, so it's in their eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being there. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Bozenmark, closed session second by, uh, Councilman Baird. Bozenmark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Baird?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll, go ahead and let's take a quick, couple of little resets.